Alrighty, everybody. It looks like we have enough members present, so I will give it over to the chair to kick us off.
Hello and welcome. I now call the meeting of the Washington 500 Continuum of Care Board to Order for the King County Regional Homelessness Authority. And will Kirk please call the roll? Okay. Patricia Sam.
Present.
Thank you. Tamara Bellman.
Here.
Kenya Carol Hillman. Georgia Floyd.
Um, she's excused. She's going to be on a leave of absence.
Thank you. Bella Irons. Antoinette Lambert.
Here.
Thank you. Amaya Lenore. Victor Lu. Thank you. Elizabeth Morgan.
Here.
Thank you. Lacey Morgan.
Here.
Thank you. Dorsal Plants. Ruby Romero.
Here.
Martha Sasserosi.
Here.
Thank you. Christina Sawicki.
I think I've seen her in the participants.
Okay, thank you. Amy Thomas.
Here, thank you.
Thank you. T T White.
Here.
Thank you. Is she not in? Okay, so we have ten members present and that is four. Okay, um, so let's move on to the land acknowledgement and theory of change. Do I have anyone that would like to read the land acknowledgement? Was it, was it T T White? You did it last, or would you like to do the land acknowledgement?
Sure, let me pull it up really quick. Sorry, I read over the meeting notes and didn't see my name.
That's okay. I apologize, putting you on the spot.
Um, okay. The King County Continuum of Care Board acknowledges that we work on the unceded tradi- traditional lands of the coast Salish peoples, especially the first peoples of Seattle, the Duamish people, the original stewards of the land past and present. We honor with gratitude the land itself and the Duamish tribe. This acknowledgement only becomes meaningful when combined with accountability. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Tamara, would you want to do the theory of change?
Sure thing. Yeah. Yeah. The theory of change is, oh my gosh, where did it go? Um, is it possible to get it up on the screen? Because the, oh, thank you.
Put the agenda on the screen. One second. Thanks, Tamara. I appreciate putting you on the spot as well.
Thanks. I also think it's good to have it on the agenda during this, um, during this time, so people can follow along.
One hundred, I would agree. You know, we are pulling it up. Thank you for that.
Awesome, thank you. So the theory of change reads, if we create a homelessness response system that, oh my gosh. Sorry, if we, I promise I'll get it together. Uh, if we create a homelessness response system that centers the voices of people with lived experience of homelessness, then we can focus on responding to, gosh. Yeah, I am very, very sorry for this dysfunction. Um, responding to needs and eliminating inequities, uh, to end homelessness for all.
Thank you, Tamara. I appreciate that. And, um, that brings us into the next portion of our agenda, which is the welcoming of new board members. And we do have a good amount of the new board members on the call. We should have the rest tuning in later, I believe, but, uh, so I just wanted to say welcome to the Continuum of Care Board. We are excited to be working with you. I'm excited to be working with you. I speak for myself. And I wanted to give, um, the floor over to the other board members if they wanted to say any words of welcoming. So I hand the floor over to any board members. Thanks.
Welcome aboard, everyone. It's so great to see, um, so many new faces as, you know, I'm one of the, the, the long timers. So it's good to see, um, new faces and I can't wait to see where we go together.
Good morning, good morning. Welcome, welcome, welcome. This is Patricia, C O C Board Member. Just want to say welcome to all the new board members. Awesome. I may be off camera, just want to let you know now because I'm in a public space right now, but look forward to all the work and sharing out from you all.
Thank you, guys.
Or I should say, and with you all, excuse me.
Thanks, Patricia. Thanks, Tamara. If there's no, nothing else on this section of the agenda, let's, do I hear a motion to approve the C O C Board Meeting Minutes from the June twenty twenty four meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All right, that moves us into discussion. For the Board Meeting Minutes from June twenty twenty four meeting? Are there any, is there any discussion, discussion, whatever that word is? Not hearing any? Going twice? Thrice? We're good. Okay, we're going to move on to a voice vote. So all those in favor of approving the June twenty twenty four meeting minutes from the C O C Board Meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Any abstentions?
This is Victor I have seen since I wasn't present.
Thanks, Victor. All right, the motion passes. Great. And, uh, really quick, I wanted to make sure that we do identify ourselves for our captioner that is on the call today. Um, we, if we can, when we come on to speak, if we could please identify who we are that is speaking, so we can make sure that the captioning is clear for those who need it to access this meeting. It's important to have access. So thank you. Appreciate that. Um, so moving right along to public comment, um, we should move into the, uh, public comment forum being open and is there anyone here to make a comment?
If you would like to make a comment, raise your hand in Zoom.
That's right. If you would like to make a comment, please raise your hand in Zoom. And we will call on the order that it was received.
Chair, I'm seeing no hands.
All right. I'm seeing no hands as well, so that would be a second call for public comment. Third call for public comment. Okay, um, I always encourage everyone to send in their comments to the, what is it, C O C?
Parking lot. And they could put them in the Q and A as.
Yeah, what's the email though? Do we send it to if they have questions? C O C and, or info at, info at K C R H A dot board. Okay, uh, moving on to the most important part of today's agenda, I hand it over to Kelsey to give us an update on the approval of the NOFO rating and key indicators. And that's going to be what moves us into the NOFO process for this year. So Kelsey, take it away.
Awesome. Thank you, Ruby. Hi, everyone. Uh, Kelsey Beckmeyer. She's her pronouns Program Performance Manager with K C R H A. Uh, glad to be in this space with you all today. I'm going to be sharing my screen, um, and walking through a couple of different things. Um, so first I'm going to do a, a presentation that kind of goes over the key areas of change for the twenty twenty four NOFO rating criteria. Um, from there, I will also share the kind of track change document, so you can see where we made those changes to criteria. Um, after that, I will open it up for any questions or discussion. Um, so happy to walk through those things with you. Let me pull up my presentation for you. All right, so we are focusing on rating updates for the twenty twenty four NOFO. Uh, we will be reviewing the proposed changes and updates to the rating materials. Um, having space for question and answer, uh, and then seeking approval from you all, uh, as the C O C Board. So a little bit of kind of anchoring into what we have been doing. So the NOFO Planning Work Group, which is a work group of the C O C Board, has been meeting since April or May, um, to go over NOFO materials in preparation for the fiscal year twenty twenty four NOFO. Um, which is the renewal of our Continuum of Care funding dollars, um, which this year is around sixty two million dollars. Uh, this work group, uh, has done two things so far within the planning. Um, we prepared the recommendations for the values and priorities, which were voted on by the Board in May of twenty four. Uh, and we have been collectively reviewing all of the rating criteria. Uh, we have to rate all of our renewing projects and any potentially new projects for the NOFO. We collaborated on recommended changes to rating and key indicators in some sections. Uh, the only sections that we looked at were non-H M I S data-driven areas. Um, so these are really on narrative sections where we collect information through our local application, uh, where the raiders will then read and evaluate applications. Um, a little bit on rating and ranking, this is a requirement for the C O C NOFO process. Um, and then it's a two-step process. The first is rating. So this is where we have to score all of the the projects that are being renewed for C O C funding based on standard criteria. Um, one of those could be, um, how many days it takes between being referred to a rapid rehousing program and moving into housing. So that's a standard measurement that folks are then rated on. Uh, the second step in rating and ranking is ranking. Uh, and this is where we look at the rated list. Um, and this is, this is looked at as like highest to lowest. Uh, and we review this list based on the local values and priorities that were approved in May. Um, to see if we want to move any, anything in the rated list up in the ranking. Um, so for example, uh, we have seen historically youth programs, which are largely transitional housing programs, rated lower because they're not permanent housing. And because we want to prioritize ending youth homelessness, raiders and rankers have chosen based on our local values to move a lower rated program up higher in our ranking. So all of our youth programs are not at the bottom of our rated list. And we will talk about that later on in our NOFO process as well. Um, but just wanted to share kind of those two distinctions. There are some HUD requirements related to the rating process. Uh, and I just want to caveat that these are the requirements from fiscal year twenty twenty three. Fiscal year twenty twenty four, the NOFO has not dropped yet. We are anticipating that to come in the next like week or two. Um, however, these requirements have been kind of the standard requirements from the past previ- from previous years. Um, so we have a fairly decent assumption that these requirements will also carry forward into twenty twenty four. Um, but overall, the requirements related to rating include having an established total number of points available for each project type. At least thirty-three percent of the total points are based on objective criteria, such as cost effectiveness, um, timely draws, so timely draws from kind of the HUD bank account. Utilization rate in those projects. Uh, at least twenty percent of the total points then need to be based on system performance criteria. And those are, um, things like exits to permanent housing, retention of permanent housing, uh, and return rates to homelessness. The provided points for projects need to address programs that have speci- that offer specific services for those with severe barriers to housing and services. Um, so this is really looking at our programs low barrier, are they operating on a housing-first, um, model? Next, uh, there need to, we need to use data from a comparable database to score projects submitted by victim service providers. Um, so this is using our comparable database for domestic violence. And finally, provided points for projects based on the degree the projects identified any barriers to participation by those fake, um, of folks with, from different races and ethnicities. Uh, so all of these are areas that HUD will be looking at that we incorporate into our rating. Um, so first, things that are not changing. Anything related to the H M I S data and how we rate and review related to what, what is in H M I S and really our system performance criteria is not changing. Um, so we will not be reviewing that as that is not changing for this year. A little bit of, um, a context as to why. Um, so previous, previously, the last two years that, um, K C R H A has been the collaborative applicant. Um, the performance and measurement team at King County was running the data with H M I S to provide the scores based on H M I S data. Um, that is not happening this year. So K C R H A has had to recode to run the H M I S data. And the lift of that project really took away from our looking at H M I S data and the rating and cra- and key indicators. Uh, so this is going to be something that will be reviewed in coming years when there is the capacity to do so and do so really, um, with more of a kind of fine tooth comb. So want to be able to have the opportunity to dig into that a little bit more. Um, and the NOFO will be on a, a break next year for renewals. Uh, so we'll have kind of ample opportunity to collaborate with the NOFO Planning Group to be really digging into the H M I S data. Um, also in partnership with the System Performance Committee. The areas we are proposing to make updates to the rating and key indicators um, are really in Section Five and Section Six. Uh, you all should have received, uh, this as well as the actual key indicators. So if you have that to follow along, wonderful. If not, we, I'll pull it up after this. Uh, so we are really looking at our narrative information. So this is all, um, scoring areas where we receive information from projects to inform what they are doing in their programs to serve people. Uh, we are wanting to make some additions as well to what is captured and what is scored. Uh, we are wanting to add a program component priority. Um, we are adding in scoring particularly for safe havens and for joint component transitional housing, rapidly housing programs. This is a newer model that was added. Um, and we are also adding in scoring for support services only. Um, and this is because we have one youth homelessness demonstration pro- project that is funded, um, that is now being scored through the NOFO. So we needed to add that program component to have a score. Um, we are then wanting to add in an additional program population priority based on our local values and priorities. Uh, which wants to see kind of dedicated support to elders and seniors. So we are adding in points for projects that serve a hundred percent of elders and seniors. Uh, we are then updating the criteria and incre- and increasing the point value, uh, when it comes to the housing-first narrative. The program termination and low barrier housing narrative. The participant engagement and feedback narrative. The lived and living experience narratives. The racial equity narrative and the L G B T Q I A Two Spirit Plus narrative. Um, along with increasing point values, we are also recommending adding in bonus points. Um, for those who are kind of going above and beyond, um, our highest criteria, uh, in terms of how they are serving and working with folks with lived experience. Um, those, uh, the racial equity narrative, those who haven't implemented D I E policy. And then we are also looking at adding in bonus points for those whose intake processes are more gender inclusive to ask folks upfront what their pronouns are, um, to ensure that folks are being um, really welcomed into their programs and being offered services based upon gender identity from the beginning. Um, finally, the last thing where we are recommending changes is to update the criteria related to the scoring on project expenditures or how programs are spending their money. Um, this was previously a one to two scale. We're recommending increasing it to five. Um, and adding a little bit of nuance to the criteria as well, and we will walk through some of that in more detail. Um, I will pull this up later as well, but really the summary of the ask to all of you um, is that the NOFO Planning Work Group, I am here representing that work group, uh, request that the C O C Board approve the recommended changes affirmed by the System Performance Committee to the twenty twenty four NOFO rating and key indicators, including edits required based on feedback from the Board and/or HUD's detailed instructions once they publish that for the twenty twenty four NOFO. Um, I see something in the chat. Oh, and that's Elizabeth. So D I E, diversity, equity and inclusion. We are looking at adding in bonus points. Um, for those who have a currently implemented divi- diversity, equity, inclusion and belonging, um, uh, policy. So I am going to open up the track changes document. And I just would like to affirm, can you all see my Word document? Okay, fabulous. Um, so wanted to show you all through doing kind of track changes.
Kelsey.
Yes.
We only see your presentation, not your Word document.
You were supposed to say screen.
Let me do a new share. Is that better?
Yeah.
Can you see a Word document now?
Yes.
Fabulous.
Should have been patient.
All right. Um, so this is what the NOFO Work Group has also been reviewing and working on. So did track changes to show you the, where we made changes. I'm gonna make this a little bit bigger. Um, so the first thing I want to highlight, we increased the point, the total points available. Uh, last year, the total number of points available was ninety-five. And through these changes, we would be increasing it to a hundred and twenty-six total points. Uh, we are not making changes to kind of the HUD standard measurements. Um, these are all kind of driven by a lot of HUD and HUD requirements. So none of this, um, is being recommended for any changes at this moment in time. So I'm going to move through those um, to really show you where we're making these changes. So the first, again, we are under, looking at HUD system and program component priority measures. Um, so first, we have program component priority. Um, these are all driven by kind of HUD recommendations. Uh, we have added in points for joint component projects. Um, this is a newer component type that did not have its own kind of dedicated, um, score. We've also then added in safe haven as we do have two safe havens in our community that we need to score. Uh, and then we have the Y H D P or homeless youth homelessness administration project support services only, um, adding that program component in as well to our scoring. Uh, the next section, we have added in points for program population priority and adding in points for programs where one hundred percent of the units are dedicated to serve elders and seniors. Um, the other program priorities are HUD population priorities as well. So we are kind of personalizing this based on our local C O C values and priorities. We next have the housing-first narrative section. Uh, we are increasing this from two points to five points. Um, and we have in indicated on the scale, um, that five points would be the agency provides a clear description and documentation that identifies a housing-first model in alignment with HUD standards. And no points would be the agency provides a description and documentation that does not identify housing-first model, nor is in alignment with HUD standards. Um, and just a little caveat regarding like process. Yes, we have this in writing. Um, we will also be having an orientation for raiders about what do we mean by housing-first and HUD standards. Um, so there will be materials provided to the raiders so that they can be making informed decisions as they're reviewing applications and materials. Um, the same will go with, um, all this kind of subsequent narrative sections of having some really clear criteria for raiders. Uh, the next area is the program termination and low barrier housing. This is again increased to five-point value from a previous two-point value. Five points would be that the pr- program provides clear description and documentation that identifies a low barrier service model and supports minimizing program termination in alignment with HUD standards. And zero points would be that the program provides a description and documentation that does not identify low barrier services and/or supports to minimize program termination, nor is in alignment with HUD standards. Um, next, we have the participant engagement and feedback narrative, which is again increased to a five-point value from a two-point value. A five would be that the, the program solicits qualitative and quantitative feedback more than once a year and provides clear examples of how they have changed practices based on feedback and engagement. And no points, the program does not solicit or incorporate participant feedback. We next have the lived and living experience. Five points. Again, we're going from five points to two points. Five points. The agency has at minimum one dedicated board seat for a person actively receiving services from the organization and one filled seat for someone with past lived experience. Zero points would be that the agency does not have a dedicated board seat for someone with lived experience. Uh, we then are including a bonus. And this bonus would be full points if the board seat for the person actively reserving se- receiving services from the organization is currently filled. So if that seat is not just on paper, but there is actually someone sitting Is currently filled. So if that seat is not just on paper, but there is actually someone sitting in that board seat, they would receive a bonus. For the racial equity narrative, uh, this is also going from two points to five points. Um, five points would be that the agency names and describes specific actions taken to increase racial equity in the project. And zero points would be the agency provides no clear statement or action on increasing racial equity in the project. And then again, we would have bonus points, um, and you would receive the bonus points on by having a fully implemented D E I policy. Or diversity, equity, inclusion of policy. For the LGBTQI two spirit plus narrative, it's also going from two points to five points. Five points would be that the agency names specific actions taken to increase LGBTQIA two spirit plus equity in the project. Zero points would be the agency provides no clear statement or action on increasing LGBTQIA two spirit plus equity in the project. Um, then we have a two point bonus for inclusive intake processes. So full points would be awarded if the project included space for participants to indicate pronouns. And the last area for changes, uh, for project expenditures. This is, uh, looking at how much they have spent down their award. This is going from two points to three points. I think I misspoke and said five points previously, um, but it's moving to three points. So three points would be that the underspend of their award is less than or equal to ten percent. So if they had a hundred thousand dollar award, they spent ninety thousand dollars or more. One point would be if underspend is over or less over ten percent or less than twenty five percent. And then there would be no points awarded if the overs- if the underspend is over twenty five percent. So if they had a hundred thousand dollar grant and they only spent, um, they did, they spent less than seventy five thousand dollars, they would not receive. These points. That is a lot of me talking, um, so I am going to pause. I'm going to also. Stop sharing my screen so I can see your faces, um, and see if there are any questions. I will reshare my screen as well if there, um. If folks have questions, specific, specific, specific areas that they would like to look at. Yes, Victor.
Um, thank you so much, Kelsey, for the very comprehensive and powerful presentation. I do have four questions as I was listening. So perhaps because I'm still new to the, well, I'm just curious about. The rating system, I understand the points overall is hundred and twenty six points. It's a little rubric system for rating that has been established in the past.
Yes, so this is based on the rating that has been used. For a number of years. So this has been used when King County was a collaborative applicant. Um, and we are carrying forward this rubric, um, and then making these changes right now based on, um, the NOFO work group.
Uh, thank you for clarifying that. The, the reason I ask is because I actually had done a lot of grant reviews. Rubric system always helps when. There is an auto stamp for the total scoring, so it just takes off the. Amnesty really burdens for all parties when it comes to reviewing. The second question I have is more about a funding impact question. You mentioned during your presentation that the NOFO is gonna take a break next year, which give us a opportunity to provide pop food. Did that, but I'm just curious about, can you clarify what when the NOFO takes a break next year? Would there be any funding impacts to existing providers who already funded through the system?
That is a great question. We don't fully know what it means quite yet. Um, so right, right now, the National Alliance on Ending Homelessness is doing their national conference. And there is a section about what to do with your, with twenty twenty five, your year off for the NOFO. Um, and this was like the, the only time we really had anything official from HUD that next year. We don't have a, a, a NOFO for renewals. Um, so I don't know yet if that means there will be any new money that's awarded next year. So it could be that we have a year off for renewing, uh, existing funds, but we may still be able to apply for new dollars. I'm not sure yet. Um, I believe that session is Tuesday or Wednesday. Uh, and I actually, there's a, um, a Facebook group called the Hub on Ending Homelessness. And there is a lot of really good intel in that group. Um, so we might get some more information at that session or after that session. Um, being shared on what it looks like. So I don't think we're gonna fully know what it looks like until probably a couple more weeks. Um, but what I have heard is that. With the twenty four renewal, it will likely be two year grant periods. Um, with the dollars being renewed each year or kind of re-upped each year. Um, as there, there will still likely be fair market rent increases on rental assistance. Um. That's what we know or what I know so far.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Thank you so much, Kelsey. That was helpful. The reason I ask is because organizations obviously have this plan for their. Implementation plan and fiscal year budget implementation. And then, but I'm more relieved to hear given what you know now that it may be a two year renewal. Uh, process, but we don't know yet, but hopefully that's the. Case even that it will have overall impacts on sustainability and staffing as well and service delivery. Um, bear with me, two more questions. So the third question is, uh. Uh, you also reference approach expenditure, which is, uh. You reference that it's gonna be up to three points and how it's gonna be spent if you spend hundred percent. Of the funding allocation, and, and again, being new to this, uh, the ball. I, I'm curious that do we ask the applicants for independent financial audit statement?
Yep, so we, when we do our, when K C R H J does our annual monitoring, we do ask for independent audit statements. Um, we are also looking at project expenditures based upon our HUD reporting. So we are going to, um, be looking at. The last three years of HUD reporting and what HUD indicates. What were, what was spent down from funding just for the C O C fund dollars? So we have, um, ability to verify that through what's called E locks. This is like the HUD bank account that we have access to. Some people with K C R J, who are the accountants and have access to the money. Um, as well as Sage, which is the reporting, uh, reporting repository where we have to submit the annual performance reports. We can also verify spending and amounts, um, through that. So, um, we will actually, we have on Friday, um, a session with our current C O C funded providers. And one of the changes for the application process. We are pre-filling a lot of the spending information for organizations to verify it. Um, so rather than the organization having to go back through the last three years of their grant spending. We've done that work already, and then we will ask them to verify, and if they have. More than X amount underspent to provide reasoning as to why, um, they have not spent. X amount of money.
Uh, thank you so much. And then, I'm, I'm sorry, this actually let me do another clarifying question then. So it for. Uh, organizations that understand. For the funding, is there a process to reallocate funds to overperformers?
There is a process to reallocate. Um, so there is, we have a reallocation policy. Um, and that will. We have typically three ways that we look at doing reallocation. One is voluntary, so the agency indicates we no longer want to do this program or can't do this program. Or we are not spending enough of this money, we're gonna reallocate. Uh, and we can look at that and look at when we do the rating, look at underperformers and look at the spending. Um, so we, we do have a process like that. Um, right now, there is. Hmm, I haven't heard of anything officially that we would be reallocating for twenty twenty four. Um. So we will kind of see where things land. Um, I do know. Over the last year, we had, um, a couple of organizations that needed to pull away, so we had to. Um, R F P some of those outside of the NOFO. So it's a different process during the NOFO than outside of the NOFO. Um, and at this moment in time, I am not aware of anything that will be officially reallocated for the twenty twenty four NOFO.
Great. That, that you so much, Kelsey. So this is definitely my last question. How, how are the raiders selected for the review process? How do you determine who are gonna be the raiders?
That is a perfect, wonderful, timely question because that will be part of my NOFO updates. Um, but our wonderful procurement team will be doing some recruitment for raiders. Um, we are getting a, uh. Kind of a blast email out to community to become raiders for the NOFO. Um, so that will be going out via email and it will also be posted on our website. Um, the aim is to get that link on our website this week. We have a lot of severe weather stuff happening, so I know our comms team is really focused on getting our severe weather activations up. Um, so we are hoping to get everything up on the website by the, probably by the end of the week for raider recruitment. Uh, and we'll be doing a raider orientation later in July. Great questions.
Yeah, thank you so much, Kelsey.
Thank you. And Martha, I see your hand.
Yes, thank you, Martha Sessracy. Um, and I don't know, Kelsey, if it's possible to pull back up on screen the question with, um. The project type designations. I just had a follow up about the. Uh, addition for, I think the language was specific, like specifically Y H G P supportive services only. And I think. Our, my understanding is our only other supportive services only C O C projects are, um. Are two coordinated entry awards, standard. Okay, yep, and then H M I S. Okay, so maybe three additional awards.
So those awards are not rated, they are only ranked.
Gotcha. Okay, so then this, um, supportive services only is the only. Rated, this, this, that specific project you're speaking to, okay. And it was historically Y H G P, it is now in the continuum of care, correct?
Yes, and, um, so those dollars are still only dedicated for Y H D P funded programs. So they, if, so for example, if one of our Y H D P programs, um, was going to end or we wanted to reallocate it. Those dollars cannot be reallocated to a non-Y H D P funded program. Um, so HUD has included on the grant inventory worksheet that tells us how much money we have and what, what can be awarded. If something has a domestic violence distinction or Y H D P distinction, this is new to this year. Um, so it shows that we cannot reallocate dollars that we received through D V bonus. Or Y H D P to non-D V bonus or non-Y H D P.
Okay, cuz I think I'm just trying to understand the distinction of why like Y H G P is specified there for supportive services only. And we have like joint components that was formerly, you know, Y H G P, we have, yeah.
Yep, so, um, because we, we do not have any other supportive service only programs. That are rated, so there are. Four supportive services only, that is H M I S. Coordinated entry, coordinated entry for D V, and then the Y H D P program. The only one of those four that is rated is the Y H D P supportive services only. So it's really its own standalone.
Okay, so then, uh, I think, yeah, the, then to understand, we have, for example, joint component. That there's no distinction between whether it's a C O C or Y H G P.
Not for the component piece, and I can take out the Y H D P indicator here.
Okay, I wasn't sure if it, yeah, cuz it's. Maybe it was just unnecessarily throwing me off, but if it's, what's truly like, we're trying to signify something particular to that versus the other. Y H G P projects. But if, if it doesn't have any particular significance, then maybe we can just strike it, so it does not perhaps confuse others too. Thank you.
Yep, no, I completely, um, that makes a lot of sense, yes.
Thanks for, thanks for that clarification there. Um. I just had a quick question as well, Kelsey. Thanks for giving this presentation today. Uh, can you talk about a little bit about why it's like, why the points were maybe increased or what that means to the, the, the actual. Um, process of rating and ranking and why it would be good or bad potentially to be increasing or decreasing points these.
Yeah, that is a great question, Ruby. So. One of the main reasons why the NOFO planning group decided to increase points was to also show that. These are areas that we really value as a C O C. Um, previously, housing first. Low barrier, um, incorporating folks with lived and living experience, racial equity, all were two points. So the weight, the overall weight that those narratives carried on the overall total. Um, just wasn't as. Significant in point value. So we wanted to increase the point value to also increase the significance of. Why we value these things, why we think that, um, a strong racial equity, um. Is important in your program, why we think having inclusive LGBTQIA two spirit plus policies is important. Um, and so by increasing the point values, it's also increasing the. Kind of the sentiment and the rhetoric that like this is not just a checkbox, but like we really wanna see these things happening. Um, and kind of, Ruby, to kind of expand on your question as well, um, we added in. Areas for bonus points to highlight what we wanna see moving forward. So we know that there are some agencies that have robust and implemented D I E or, uh. Diversity, Equity, Inclusion, I'll try not to speak in, in acronyms, inclusion policies, but not all programs have that. But we wanna see that. So we wanted to start kind of laying the foundation of what we wanna see throughout programs in our continuum.
Thank you. I appreciate the clarification there. Yeah, that was a pretty good summary of what I understood about the point system, so. Um, thanks for, thanks for expanding on that a little bit. Do we have any other questions for Kelsey before? Hearing none, did you, or did you have more on the presentation? We were taking a break for, oh, I see Elizabeth just came off mute.
What is Y H D P?
Y H D P is Youth Homelessness Demonstration Program. So this was a, like an innovation program that HUD launched in fiscal year twen- two thousand sixteen. Um, the, our continuum was one of the first awarded Y H D P continuums. Um, this is usually. Let me back up. It started as an innovation project, so things that you did not see usually funded by C O C funds. Um, to look at how to innovatively support and develop youth programs. Um, something that is unique about our continuum with related to the NOFO and Y H D P. Or Youth Homelessness Demonstration Program, uh, is previously. So in, in fiscal year twenty two, uh, we did not rate the. Youth Homelessness Demonstration Program projects. They were just renewed. It was not competitive. As of last year, fiscal year twenty three. The Y H D P programs from, that were awarded in fiscal year sixteen. Had to be competitively renewed. So last year was the first year we had to rate those projects. And moving forward, we will be rating those projects. Um. So they'll be a part of like the full C O C competition.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Just really quick, what was, what does NOFO stand for? Is Notice of Funding?
Notice of Funding Opportunity.
Thank you, appreciate that, thanks.
Yes.
Any other questions? Did we, um, Kelsey, was there more to your presentation there?
I, that is really the summer, the, the sum of it all. Uh, yeah, I see a Q and A around from Christina around the NOFO work group. Uh, so the planning work group, we will be kind of, we have been meeting weekly with things kind of kicking off. The planning part of it is wrapping down. We still will be engaging every other week. Um, just to kind of touch base on how things are going. Um, and kind of the next big focus after the renewal part. So the project renewals will start kind of as soon as HUD drops the NOFO. Um, and from there, the work group will be. Um, and from there, the work group will be meeting um, about every other week. And then come probably late August through mid-September. Uh, we may meet weekly again to review some of the consolidated application questions um, as we prepare for the consolidated application responses.
Great.
Thanks for the planning, the planning is pretty well wrapped up. We've moved into the work. Yeah.
And do I hear a motion to approve the recommended changes affirmed by the Assistant Performance Committee to the fiscal year twenty-four NOFO rating and key indicators? Sorry, what was that?
I move that we approve the uh NOFO changes.
All right, I hear a second. That was Tamra and Elizabeth, thank you. And uh, so we move into discussion surrounding the recommended changes to the rating and key indicators. Any discussion? Not hearing any second, third chance, last chance. Okay, we are moving into a roll call vote. Patricia Sam.
Ex, this is Patricia, board member, accept.
Tamra Bowman.
I.
Kenyatta Carroll-Hillman. Bella Irons.
Ella Irons, accept.
Antoinette Lambert.
Accept.
Amaya Lenore. Victor Liu.
Approve.
Elizabeth Mopin.
Approve.
Lacey Morgan.
Accept.
Ruby Romero.
Approve.
Martha Ceserosi.
Approve.
Christina Soliki. Uh, there's a Amy Thomas.
Amy Thomas, approve.
P T White.
Approve.
Thank you. So it sounds like that was a, yeah, the motion has passed and the motion was for the rating of key indicators for the twenty twenty-four NOFO process. So Kelsey, we got, we got through that vote. There we go. We are ready to go for the NOFO. So that moves us into, is it, is it the, uh, the coordinated entry update from Leah? Do we have Leah on the line with us?
Leo was not able to join, um, but I can, I can share an update. So coordinated entry, they're working on moving to a live inventory for all available units, that is both shelter beds and housing. Um, so this will give a real-time indication of what is available in our system. Um, our coordinated entry team and HMIS teams have been doing a lot of training with providers on how to do this within HMIS and how to track things. Um, so this will be going live over the next couple of months, um, which is a really exciting step forward. Um, the coordinated entry committee is also looking at the coordinated entry policies and um, including the shelter inventory within the coordinated entry policies and the HMIS policy. So that will be work that the coordinated entry committee is reviewing as well over the next couple of months as this gets integrated into this. And those are the updates that I noticed.
Great, thank you. Um, and we're going to move into a five-minute break for the captioner. Um, well, we will see you guys back at three. All right, welcome back. It has been five minutes. I hope that break was good for you, captioner, and we want to say, say thank you for captioning today. Um, so the next thing is going right back to Kelsey. If she's ready to give the update on the NOFO, which she did provide a little bit of insight on earlier.
I need to unmute myself to speak, don't I? Uh, hi, I'll, Kelsey Beckmeyer, uh, she, her pronouns. Uh, so the NOFO, we are still waiting for the official announcement. Um, we would usually see it around this time. Um, it is likely coming next week. So the first step um, that usually tells us that the NOFO is, is imminent is called the Grant Inventory Worksheet. This is a spreadsheet that HUD prepares for every continuum of care to say, this is what we have listed as all of your projects that are set to expire in twenty twenty-five. Um, this is the amounts that we believe you will be renewing at. Confirm this for us. So we have gotten that document. It was posted online on the twenty-sixth. Um, as for our COC, we have a number of what are called direct recipients. So organizations that receive the grants directly from HUD, ACRHA is one of them. King County is also a direct recipient of, of grants. Um, DESC holds one gr- grant directly, Youth Care has two, Friends of Youth has one, and Solid, Solid Ground. Um, and then uh, the Archdine IC's authority, housing authority with CCS holds a few direct grants. So I have reached out to all of those agencies to confirm their direct grants and if there are any changes needed. Um, on the tenth, so in two days, we, as the collaborative applicant, will be submitting to our local HUD office um, what's called a change form. So if there are any grants that had an amendment um, or if HUD missed a grant that we need to renew, we will submit that to our local HUD office. Um, this gives us our estimated renewal, so the estimated amount that we will be renewing. Um, right now, that amount is, let me see if I can get you an actual is about sixty-two million dollars is the estimated amount. Um, we will likely then have some bonus dollars. I'm thinking in the like four million dollar range between our COC um, regular bonus and the DV specific bonus dollars. Um, so we are waiting for that to get published. Um, the, on Friday, there will be an information session for renewing um, applicants. So anyone who currently has a COC grant, we will be doing an, a, a meeting with them on Friday around kind of timeline and what we think is to come. Um, the hope is to be able to release the uh, local application for renewal very soon after the NOFO drops. We just need to confirm if there's any updates or special kind of focus that, that HUD has for the coming year that we need to adapt to. Um, and we will then be working with our procurement team to get um, notification of funding availability out to, to the community for any new bonus dollars. Uh, we want to do that once we know the amount of money. Um, and if there are any kind of particular focuses, that HUD will be supporting. Um, the last two years, there have been special emphasis for new projects that have partnerships with healthcare and uh, existing housing providers as well. So we want to see kind of what, what are the HUD priorities for bonus dollars? Um, that will make us the most competitive to bring new dollars into the community. Um, that will hopefully be over the next couple of weeks. Um, and we are also actively recruiting for raiders. So if folks are interested in being raiders, um, please be on the lookout. It will be posted on our website, the link to um, be on a rating panel. It will be on our main kind of HUD COC. Oh my goodness, what's it called? COC webpage. And I will see, we will have that in the I am going to put it in the Q and A under a question. Um, and we will also be emailing that out. So please be on the lookout for any announcements for raiders. Um, we have like, oh my goodness, let me see how many projects we have that are renewing. We have, what is eight minus? I'm not going to do math in front of everyone. Eight minus sixty-five, fifty-seven, fifty-eight. We have fifty-eight projects that are renewing. Um, within that, we have, some of them have, you know, three or four applications. So we have well over sixty applications that will need to be read and ranked. Um, and we just welcome as many folks who want to be raiders for the NOFO process as possible. The rating will likely happen the first couple of weeks in um, not cou- not first couple of weeks. It, the rating will for sure happen sometime in mid-August. Um, at the latest. So we are going to be seeking as many folks as possible to be rating um, and supporting. Um, there's a question in the chat, if all raiders rate all applications? No. Um, everyone reading sixty applications is a lot. So the aim is for every application to be read by at least two or three people. Uh, yes, not having everyone. Um, we, we would love to have at least twenty raiders um, if not more. Um, just, it's a, it's a big lift. The rating and ranking for this is a really big lift. Um, and this is where, you know, we love to see COC members, um, board members, community members, um, other funding partners who are bringing subject matter expertise, lived experience um, into rating and reviewing of our COC applications. And
I think Patricia has a question.
Hi, Kelsey, thank you for the presentation. I wanted to ask, I do, worked on the rating last year, correct? Yeah. And the application. So if I have the capacity to do that this year, do I still have to reapply again or just say I want to continue on with it?
Um, let me know you want to continue on with it. I believe our raider, oh, let me see if I can find the link. I had it. It's not at the, at my fingertips right now. Um, but I believe if you have signed up previously to be a raider, um, we will reach out to folks. So we'll be doing a big call to anyone. If you have, if you've filled out our raider request sheet before, we will be sending out a call to you to recruit for raiders.
Okay, I know I did last year, so it should be there. You can just put me down for interest and then I'll follow up.
Awesome.
Hopefully by August I'll have, yeah, because I know on the applications and the process, we can do that like in the evening on our time away from. Yeah, that will, I liked it, the rating and ranking. Thank you.
Of course.
Think that's it for me.
And I think those are all the updates at the hot tip of my mind right now. Uh, there will likely be more that I am bringing to you all uh, in August as well. And I do see Bella's hand up.
Thank you. Uh, my question is if there are any kind of guidelines uh, about who the raiders are and if there's a certain amount that need to be coming from the COC or from outside agency. Um, since this is, you know, um, a system that appears like it would need to be very diverse, but I'm not well-versed in what those guidelines are right now.
Yep. Um, I, as I don't always run the rating portion, that's our procurement crew, I will speak to what I know. Um, but we do seek to have diverse panels of folks. Some of the, the particulars with the COC um, is maintaining, we do have like a conflict of interest policy. So if there is a, um, if anyone is employed by or connected to an organization that is being raided, they cannot rate that application. they cannot rate that application or be a part of the discussion of that application's rating. So we do have a conflict of interest disclosure form that every raider will have to sign. And we will have like a three-hour orientation for raiders as well in order for folks to be kind of prepared and have the materials to kind of thoroughly review and read applications.
Yeah, I'll confirm in the few ratings that I've the rating workshops that I've done. They have always included a pretty hefty training on diversity, equity and inclusion as well. So like whoever is in the work group is getting a good rundown on how to be unbiased and look at everything unbiased. Just to clarify. All right. Is there any other questions for Kelsey on the NOFO Notice of Funding Opportunity update? And again, I believe they said that if you're interested in rating, they should be sending up notification on how to get involved there soon. So then the next thing moving on is going to be an update on the new role with the COC Board that we we have here with Austin Christopherson. So I'm going to let him tell you a little bit about what he is going to be representing here on the COC Board. We're very glad to have him. So thank you, Austin.
Thank you, Ruby. Hello, everybody. We have not met yet. My name is Austin Christopherson. My official title at the KCRHA is clerk of the authority. I oversee both the IB and the GC. And moving forward, I will now be adding the COC into my repertoire of helping out Catherine and Alex. Catherine and Alex will still be your main points of contact, but I'll be able to help support them. Ensuring that we have agendas and materials ready in time, help advise in the runnings of the COC. Along with my other two boards and just overall be a resource to Catherine and Alex to help better serve you all. My official first day helping oversee the COC was the last COC meeting. Our last regularly scheduled COC meeting, we had a Nolan Boyd, it should I say. And hopefully we'll get everything on all right this time. So I'm super happy to be here, super glad to be here. And I am here to help. I do want to flag in the agenda, my last name is spelled wrong. It is E N at the end. You could blame my Dutch ancestors for that. And with that, I will hand it back to the chair. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Austin. Thanks for giving us an introduction to your your new position here. We're glad to have you and I was gonna just mention the IB and the GC is the Implementation Board and the Governing Committee, which are the other two boards here at the KCRHA. And we're very glad to have you. So thank you. The next portion is going to be a discussion revolving around the the new co-chair election process and nominees and how that's kind of going to go down. So as I'm the interim co-chair and we've got Zsa as well, the co-chair term is ending in August, so it's time to get to the next election season, the the better election season, not the November one. Anyway, so that's the opinion of myself. And so the the next thing that we're doing is talking about how that process is going and or what what the process will be like, excuse me, and how we can go about doing the nomination process. So I'll speak a little bit to what it was like in the past and I'll, you know, if I'm incorrect, come on and correct me, that's fine.
Absolutely.
But what we did in the past was we would make nominations either self-nominating ourselves or being nominated by another member of the board. And that nomination from the floor then would need to be seconded. So like you can nominate somebody other than yourself, but I would ask them first if they would like to be nominated. And so when we get to the actual election, I believe the nominees can come on and speak a little bit about why they would like to be honored as the co-chairs. And then we would go into a vote after we have heard from all the potential nominees. And then we vote on the individual nominees, right, until we fill the positions? And so that brings me to anything else that I missed on that?
The only thing that I will add is if, say, Ruby is wanting to run for one of those seats, we will have to do before the actual election, we'll have to get a chair pro tem to come in place and run the election. So we'll 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 figure that out closer to August, September. If you're asked to be pro chair pro tem, I'll be, I, Catherine, Alex will be working with you to ensure that you have all the notes needed, just so we have a fair election. So if you are not interested in the co-chair roles, but are maybe potentially interested in being a chair pro tem, please reach out to Catherine, Alex and myself and we'll put you down as potential chair pro tem. And then on the IB, the speeches that the nominees get to speak on behalf is four minutes. So I'll work with Ruby to see if four minutes is adequate for the COC. And if that's the case, that will probably be it. So if you're looking to be a co-chair, maybe keep your speech around the four-minute ballpark. And that's all. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Yeah. Any questions surrounding the process or the co-chair position in general? Martha?
Thanks, Ruby. Yes, this is Martha. So I see. I recall when we were discussing IB and Governing Committee nominations that the order of nominations had consequence. And so I just wanted to clarify here, and I think you mentioned this, Ruby, that we vote until the co-chair seats are filled. So if it's we vote in the order in which folks are nominated and once the two chair, is that right?
Yeah, I I think so.
So if, say, there is, let's just say there is four candidates for co-chair position A, right? Say there's candidate A, B, C and D. If A doesn't get it, if B doesn't get it and C gets it, then we don't go to D. If if that is how it works in Robert's rules, so that's the way we will go. But yeah, I hope that explains. That also rang a bell, just to not get confused with the IB and GC seats. There is going to be a potential for GCC appointments coming down the line, most likely in August.
Okay. So just to clarify, because yeah, that was, I just want to be clear, like, because that was a little of a weird point in the election process that we that we experienced. And so I just want to be like super, because I feel like we had done it differently in the past and maybe on these particular IB and the Governing Committee or the Implementation Board and Governing Committee positions, if maybe that was why we had voted differently in that aspect. Because I think in the past, and correct me if I'm wrong, maybe Tamara or there is, if they're here, Christine is here. Well, anyway, if Tamara could maybe speak to how the co-chair process happened for elections in the COC Board, if she's available, just to give us some context.
Yeah. So when we did the first round, and this was back in twenty twenty-one, we had two folks get nominated and we basically did it where they would stagger their terms. And each each person had like one or two minutes to like self-advocate for why they want to be the co-chair. And that that was kind of how we did it with the System Performance Committee co-chairs as well. And that it wasn't necessarily a formal process that's outlined in Robert's rules. And I've got I've got a whole bunch of things to say about Robert's rules. And so I think we didn't make it super formal. And personally, I I prefer informality because just because of the white supremacy underpinnings of some of these systems and structures that, you know, claim efficiency, but really support supremacy thinking and and all sorts of junk. So I think I would like to see kind of a another similar process, because I would hate to like have somebody be nominated and then not have any opportunity to present their case.
Right. Yeah. That's my concern.
Well, to be clear, all of them will have their chance to give their speech. Does that make sense? Yeah, so they would, there would be like the discussion part and then we'd go to the vote. That that, just to be clear, all all four candidates in that hypothetical would have had a chance to give their four-minute speeches. Just to clarify.
And I and I think I guess I would just make one ask if we can have like a a particular outline of how the vote process will go. I think that would maybe clarify a lot of it for the board members and maybe people that are are the new board members on the coming into this situation who, yeah, you get it. Thank you so much. Appreciate you. Yeah, we'll get it writing and then we can email that out to everyone. So I believe we're going to get to the actual election portion is what I was hearing is September to give some time for the board members that are new to the board to get to know everyone and know the process a little bit before we actually go into the election. So it won't be next month, but please keep it on your radar if you're interested. It's important to get involved. So that is going to be then, any other questions on that?
One quick question. And you know, I'm going to have to ask a question that gets that processed. So are we required to comply with Robert's Rules of Order? I I know that it's it's designed to be like to keep meetings on track and to avoid derailing conversations, you know, and meetings based on whatever's happening in people's lives. But I I also don't want to subscribe so thoroughly and completely to a way of conducting business that that moves us out of our like natural creative thinking and innovative like brainstorming that that comes organically, that can kind of be pushed to the side when we're adhering to a structure or a system or a practice that has been designed, most likely by white men who don't have any understanding what it means to be a woman of color, trying to make decisions, trying to run a meeting, trying to be co-chair or chair. Do we have to comply with Robert's rules or can we come up with something different? That's just my question.
No, and I think that's a great question for the board. And I think of what I will lean on is that most like most meeting group or groups that have meetings do kind of run off of a Robert's Rules mentality. I've seen it in different spaces like in AA and in even even the renters union, like tenants unions use Robert's rules. And it's mostly just to make sure that we're because I I don't know if you've ever experienced that moment where you go like, where are these people learning this language from? Like the, you know, I I yield back and all that sort of stuff. So it's just kind of the language of meetings in a way to make sure that everybody's on the same page on a basis or on a base level. And then the only other thing I'd say in our particular context, like in our charter, I believe the only actual mention of Robert's rules is it says in cases where consensus cannot be reached, the COC Board will resort to Robert's Rules of Order with a requirement of a supermajority vote of sixty percent of those present for the item on the table. And then I think that's that I could be wrong and maybe there is another mention of it, but I think that's the only mention. And so what that means is technically no, but when it comes to consensus or making a decision, we do follow Robert's Rules of Order. So that means when we vote and when we just do general meeting, you get it. I lost my my wording there, but does that make sense?
Yes, thank you. Thank you. And I just think I find it ironic, like in 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 a funny way, that we resort to Robert's rules. We can't agree.
I think we got it right in that statement, right? You know, it is kind of the last resort, I guess, is what, you know, popper roach style. Anyway, so I think that moves us into the last portion of our agenda unless I see any other residual questions. Going going to second, going twice. Oh, Elizabeth?
If there's a real interest in an alternative to Robert's rules, I know someone who could train us in consensus work.
Yeah.
Is willing.
Interesting, yeah.
I know I'm definitely interested.
Yeah, we definitely, I know Tamara, that would be a great lead into our system performance meeting review of what we are interested in and and how, you know, maybe a good space for the system performance committee too, is to have the consensus training as well. Do you want to lead us into our final agenda item of the day? Review?
Yeah, this system performance. So like I I don't have a ton of updates. The the one that I really do want to emphasize again, I I'm always going to default to the well-being analysis. And I was a a member of the Wellbeing and Procure Wellbeing and Procurement Learning Group, which kind of gave us some idea of what we should be doing and when we were developing new local metrics for system performance with in respect with respect to our our homeless response system. And I'm very, very, very pleased to say that a lot of the recommendations I had suggested made it into the final document. And one of the very first one is is important because it's about culture and and workplace well-being. So I I mean, as many of you know, I will talk about well-being until I'm blue in the face. And and when I'm talking about culture, I'm also talking about narrative change and the way we think about things and the way we conduct business. And so the one of the 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 principles that they outlined is resetting the landscape of culture and workforce within the procurement agency or team. So I, when I'm like doing rating or, you know, looking into procurement contracting, I I want to see how how well, you know, agencies are supporting the frontline staff in particular, but all staff. You know, but I want to see how though their well-being is impacted by some simple policy shifts internally. Because we know and and there's so much research coming out now about the impact of you know, toxic work cultures and like workplace bullying. We need to have some measure of safeguarding against that so that we can all do our work effectively and actually make progress and see the the outcomes of our efforts when we're trying to create social change. And also, the one of the other principles is funding what matters to people. And I'm going to emphasize the word people, not systems, not programs, not nonprofits, not government. What matters to the people being served? And that should be mandatory for all service systems. I I don't care what field you're in, but you have to if you're talking about like investing in the workforce, then you better invest in the workforce by providing as much funding as that program or that that staff needs in order to do their job well. You know, it's not enough to just say, here's enough to like move your people into housing. That's fantastic. But we also need to focus on like all the auxiliary proximate things that come along with that. Like, are you supporting your staff such that your turnover is has gone down? Like, I what what can we can we look at things like that? Because I'm I'm not just talking about systemic but structural. Like, how can we improve the conditions of our communities? So that homelessness is is rare, brief and non-recurring. But we all, we need to think about the infrastructure. Who is doing the work to actually actually make that happen? So we need to be taking care of our frontline staff as as well as the communities that we're serving. Because some of, just to be honest, I wear the service provider hat. I am currently serving folks who are also working in the same system that I work in. That's a problem. So we got a culture and like economic and social justice and racial equity problem in King County and everywhere that we need to really get serious about and not just like pay lip service to. Creating accessible and expansive RFP documents and processes. I think that's part of, you know, the procurement process, but it it also helps service providers kind of tighten up their application processes. If we're making it easier for them and not like having them like tell their entire organizational history, we should do that because we don't want to burden providers with all these questions and all these like things to to document, although I personally would. But we don't want to do that because that will burn like those service providers out. And I, you know, having experienced burnout myself, I don't want to do that to any any helper, any system that's designed to actually help people. So there is a systemic practice that we should be looking into. And shifting, again, this is one thing that I'm just so proud of, is that shifting our mindsets to a culture of yes. Trying to screen people in rather than screen people out or, you know, default to certain ways of doing things that are just problematic. That's why we need to change culture, because culture is how we do things or the systems and beliefs that we have. We need to shift those things so that equity is the center. People are the center. And then lastly, collaborating differently with our vendors. So how we write questions? So how we write questions, how we like have people submit their, their applications, that all matters. And so again, tying the well-being to system performance metric development and the NOFO rating process, I think these things in combination with the well-being blueprint principles, which provides the roadmap for larger systems change. I think these things in particular are gonna really help, you know, address some of the more complex social problems in our county. But it's also going to like, hopefully radicalize our minds, like decolonize our minds. So where we're not just focusing on fixing problems, but also building up community support, building up community power and well-being. That's, that's where we want to invest. At least that's where I want to invest my time and energy because I'm personally tired of like feeling harmed by systems that weren't set up for me. You know, and, and weren't set up for the people who I consider my beloved community, my peers. So that's what I want to, that's what I want to convey in, I guess, this, this small update. But I have so many things percolating in my brain. It's hard to keep track sometimes. So if you all want to participate in developing these metrics, please come to the System Performance Committee meeting. It's on the third Wednesdays, the third Wednesday of every month from two to four P M. And I think we're gonna start like actively working on the development of these metrics. I don't know if it's gonna be the next meeting, but certainly within the next couple of months, we're gonna be like focusing and, and like really doing intentional work around that, the metrics. So yes, come nerd out with me, please.
Thanks, Tamara. I really appreciate that update. And you know, it's, it's important to state that all of these things are so interconnected. So doing one thing over here is going to be very important to helping the next thing over here. And so I've seen you really be very diligent about putting the well-being blueprint into all the things we do here. So appreciate that. And just to clarify, the next meeting is going to be on the seventeenth of July from two to four P M at the System Performance Committee where we will be working on metrics. So thanks for giving that update. The other thing I would say is that we've been opening the meeting with a song, which has been really fun to like open the meeting with lyrics from a song and kind of build community that way. So if you have any ideas for songs you would like to hear, well, not the song, but the lyrics read, like poetry, if you will. And, you know, before, did anybody have any questions about the System Performance Committee meetings or the update that Tamara provided? Not hearing any. Thank you, Tamara. Moving on to the next regular meeting is gonna be Wednesday, August seventh, two to four P M for the next C O C board meeting. So I hope to see all the faces here today on the same call in a month. I, I really excited to see all of our new members and see some of the members we haven't seen in a little while. It's really good to see you guys. Thank you for coming. And I also wanted to, just before ending, I wanted to talk about the, the Supreme Court ruling that did happen. You know, it's almost been two weeks now. It needs to be stated that those harmful practices like camping bans, issuing citations or fines for acts of living or restrictions on time and place do not solve the problem at any intersection of homelessness. In fact, at those same intersections, we find criminalization further worsens the experience of homelessness for many people, especially communities of color and the L G B T Q I A two-spirit plus community. I urge city officials in our county to reflect that this is an issue that will take a lot longer than any of their term lengths. Without protection from the elements, people die. And in King County, our people are experiencing homelessness die thirty years sooner than the general public. The average of death is forty-three for women experiencing homelessness. So I just wanted to bring that to light. We need to focus on the advocacy of life over money. You know, it seems like at this point, it's like we really just put, we should, we should be putting people first in, in front of any other question. So I just wanted to bring that to everyone's attention and thank you so much for being here today on a special meeting and taking the time out of your day to get these important issues voted on.
Pardon me, this is Amy Thomas. Would it be okay to read out loud the comment that Kelsey made about Robert's rules before we get off here?
Please, Amy. Thank you so much for, for, thank you.
Thank you. Does that mean I'm supposed to read it?
Yeah.
Okay.
I can read it if you want.
No, I don't mind. I'm just laughing. Sorry, sorry. So from the Q and A, just a comment about Robert's rules. If it is bogging down your meeting process, then you're not doing it right. Robert's rules is intended to ensure the meeting is fair to everyone and the agenda does not get railroaded by the chairs or other groups that try to unfairly control meeting process. You can use them flexibly and you can have the consensus-driven meeting, but Robert's rules is a check against shutting out a set of participants. And I just thought that was noteworthy just because there are some strong feelings about it and I don't know enough either way. So my commentary isn't one side or the, I just thought it was important to be read. Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. That's great. I mean, it's important to involve all perspectives, but I, I, I really appreciate that. Like I said, like I said, it's like the language of meetings. So it's kind of a crucial thing I see sometimes. But anyway. Thanks for sharing that today. So we'll see you guys next time, which is gonna be August seventh, two to four P M.
Oh, Tamara. Yeah, I just wanted to say that that might be true in its intention, but that's not always true in its impact. I have heard directly from people who have, who have tried speaking in meetings that are allegedly governed by Robert's rules and have felt like sidelined and, and have felt like that creates an inequity in the diversity of voices being like allowed to speak up or, or feeling confident enough to speak up. And that's why like any system or any kind of practice that, that ends up marginalizing folks is never gonna be a practice that I will support. And so if it's, if it is like responsibly moderated or, or, you know, great, but that must be one seriously good moderator. So that's, that's the only thing I would say about that. And if we can build consensus in a way, I expect the people to be participating in that consensus building decision to be adults and to actually respect each other. And then we all have to act collectively to hold each other accountable in a kind and compassionate way. That's why I think restorative justice and like healing-centered justice should be foundational to everything that we do. Because I, I don't want to operate from a place of animosity or adversarial like things, but so I, and I also want to create more equity. And if I see any practice that, that, that discourages that, then I have to say something. I'm gonna have to say something. And so maybe it's great for some spaces, but from feedback that I've received personally, it, it warrants some serious criticism. But I'm sure that's true of any practice of that, you know?
I'm just gonna say the same thing, Tamara. That's true to, to be scrutinizing everything, I guess. Take a look at it all.
Well, I'm grateful for the feedback. So that's awesome too. I always appreciate that. Thank you.
Thanks, Amy. I think we are gonna move on to the adjournment of today's meeting and give you guys some time back for your Monday as Mondays are always the most fun, right? So let's get back out there to those Monday days and I will see you guys very soon. Thank you. Oh, I, oh, I have to do a motion. Do I hear a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Quickly, I do see Christina has a hand up in the chat.
Oh, sorry.
Answering the attendees. Yep, Christina had her hand up.
Shuffle up one second.
Good job.
I don't see Christina.
It looks like she lowered it.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
So Amy's motion, we need a second.
We need a second. I hear, you hear a second to the motion to adjourn the meeting?
A second.
All right. I hear Tamara for a second there.
Any objection?
Any objection? Or wait, what?
Let's ask for any.
Is there any discussion? Nope. Okay, now I ask for a voice vote?
Nope, you just say any objections?
Oh, any objection to adjourning meeting? Cool. Not hearing any? We are done. Thank you, guys. Have a good day.